An agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, public comment. Saying none? This meeting is being audio and video recorded. So everybody should dress well. Okay, superintendent's update.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, I'll start with the Student Opportunity Act. Uh, on April first, we submitted our yearly update to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on the Student Opportunity Act, which we presented to you last year right around this time. The Student Opportunity Act is a law that requires an in-depth three-year plan that school districts must utilize to tackle inequitable gaps in experiences and outcomes across racial and ethnic groups, in economically disadvantaged communities compared to higher-income communities, and for students with disabilities relative to their non-disabled peers, and finally, for English learners compared to, uh, students whose first language is English. Um, in our update, we shared that the, uh, the measures that we have been putting into place to address our two focus areas, which we chose, um, last year, they are strengthening our positive school environments and, uh, in- improving our multi-tiered system of support. Uh, once our update has been approved by the Department of Education, we will provide a more detailed presentation to make sure that, uh, you and the greater community are aware of the efforts that we are making to close the gaps for these special populations. Uh, I also want to remind you that while the Student Opportunity Act is an, is a mandate for all public school districts, Nantucket only sees minimal funding support from the state. Other districts are awarded more funds based on their Chapter 7 allotment and general fund budgets. So, um, MCAS is next. We have successfully completed the ELA portion of our MCAS across the district. Math and science will be testing, uh, for grades eight, three through eight at the end of April, and will continue until the end of May. Uh, high school math will happen at the end of May, and then in June, we will hold 10th grade science MCAS, um, and, uh, the brand-new eighth-grade civics MCAS. Science for grades three through eight will happen, as I mentioned earlier, um, at the end of May.
I have a question.
Yes.
Have the kids seemed involved with the testing?
I would have to, um, I would have to ask the principals, but I believe, yes, that they have been, the attendance has been very good and, um, that students have been, um, quite engaged. So, if there is anything that I am, principals, if you're, if you want to comment further, please come up to the co-podium.
Thank you. Dr. Le- Leprin, good question. Michael Horton, Cyrus Pierce Middle School Principal. If one metric is how many students were still working on the test at two o'clock that day, there were close to forty students. Uh, many sixth graders were taking the full day to write their two essays. Um, so I, I honestly, I don't have data to back this up, but my sense was students put more effort into the test this year than they've had in the past. That was nice, nice to hear. And as, as Dr. Howlett just mentioned, um, we just finished our makeups today. Of all 363 students at CPS, all 363 just finished ELA. Like, we didn't miss a single kid, so we're 100% participation. So, I don't know if anyone else wants to report?
Mandy?
High school, high school has, has finished a while ago, so they're getting ready for that.
Yes, we already finished our ELA, and what I will tell you is, so when we do testing, we have a block of time set aside for testing. Any students that need additional time, we transition those students to here. Um, that way, they have the whole rest of the day if they need it. Um, this year, for ELA, whenever we transitioned our students to the LGI for the additional time, we had the most students here for additional testing time than we've had since I've been here. So I think our students took it very seriously. Um, they are fully aware that they don't have to have a passing score for graduation credits, um, or requirement, but they, I believe, they took it very seriously. And we also had, um, good attendance. Um, I, but we had a few students that had to do, uh, makeups like the next couple of days, but I'm, I'm pretty, I believe we got everyone in tested for the sophomore class.
Excellent.
May I ask a question? Is there any data around if colleges are interested in that, those testing scores in Massachusetts?
I don't know. It might be part of the transcript, but I don't know that they are really that interested in that information.
If I may, the only, um, one of the, the, um, important pieces around MCAS is the, um, John and Abbott Gale Adams Scholarships, which are to states, excuse me, to state schools. Um, those are dependent on passing gra- on, uh, passing scores, on proficient scores. So, um, students do need to take the MCAS and take it seriously if they are looking for that support.
Yes, because if I may, uh, to follow up, the, um, those scholarships are based on their first time taking the exam. So they can't retake it in order to, um, improve their score for scholarship purposes.
Wow.
And we make that, um, information clear to them so that they know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, along the lines of competency, competency determination, um, we are in the process of creating a plan for credit audits, um, for any student who may be eligible, uh, for high school diploma, uh, a high school diploma, but was not awarded that diploma due to not passing the MCAS. Um, Cape and Island superintendents are working together on some common language around this and a protocol to consider requests for credit audits for students who are in the situation that I mentioned. But, um, it is challenging because, again, um, there are people who I think might have some false hope. We do have to look very carefully at the courses that were taken. Um, some students who went through a portfolio review, which tends to be students with, um, IEPs, uh, may not have taken the courses that are equivalent to the expectations on the regular, um, 10th grade MCAS. So, um, that's part of the credit audit, and that's why it needs to be very well-designed so that we can be sure. Um, but that, but we will certainly, um, make or do audits for any request that comes our way.
That sounds to me like we've said we're gonna lower the hurdle, and now we're moving it up again.
I agree with you. Uh, the issue is that the state, um, that's the expectation of the state, so...
But don't, doesn't this, the school committee get to make those decisions?
No, it does not. They, um, it, it is required, we have to be able to put a policy in place that includes the expectations that the, that the law provides, which means that they have to have, have passed the, all of the courses that test in the 10th grade, the, um, math and English Language Arts standards that are expected. So, um, if a student, uh, took a ta- took a class that was, uh, not, uh, did not include all of those standards or those standards were modified or not done in full, um, in a, in a, um, complete way, uh, they would potentially not have the ability to get a diploma. It's the tricky part. It's the, the law itself is, um, the, the passing of this law really took everyone by surprise in that it was not a well, personally, I believe it was not a well-constructed law. There should have been a little bit more around, um, what the expectations were. But that said, districts will do everything they can to try to get students over the finish line.
And if I may, through the chair, we discovered in our policy meeting that it is the principal that dis- that decides if the student will receive their diploma. Am I correct about that?
Um, not necessarily. The...
Sorry, Mandy.
There's still, we would have to re- we, we could certainly review that policy.
Okay.
Um, it, most likely, it is the principal who will make the determination, but the credit audit happens at the high school. And so, it's the, um, the guidance department that, the counselors that look at all of the specific course, courses that are, um, considered the required courses to, that they have to have passed, and, um, and those courses will be, um, expected. We also put in our policy additional pieces going forward around, um, uh, exam, final exams or, or a cumulative exam that would support that. So, there's, um, again, like I said, this is s- still new to all of us, and we're trying to do things in an appropriate way, and the department can certainly audit us if we have, if we don't have a policy that's held up to the law, so...
Mandy, do you have anything to say on that?
About the credits?
No. Since apparently the hot potato was enjoying it.
So, um, while I don't disagree with the superintendent, um, it is the principal's responsibility to check that all the credits have been met. Um, there are extenuating circumstances sometimes that a credit might need to be waived or there is something that, uh, would be replaced as far as a graduating credit. So I make sure to check, like, we have students that want to do online coursework. Our policy, since I've been here, is that students aren't allowed to do online coursework unless it's been approved through administration and that we've checked what that is. Um, and I feel pretty strongly about that because there are programs that students could earn a credit that would be, uh, deemed a graduation credit, but it might not be the quality of programming that we want it to be. So we have to take a look at that. And sometimes, when you look at those programs, they take a final exam. There are programs that, when you do the final exam, it is done in school where there is a school personnel who is the person that is overseeing that final exam. If that's not the case, and the student can do that online to finish that, could mean anybody's taking that test. So those are things I think we have to look at. And then, of course, um, once I've validated, then the superintendent would have the right to take a look at that as well.
But there aren't gonna be any more kids that are gonna be eligible for this.
Eligible for...
For getting a diploma that they missed out on because of MCAS.
They, so the, the MCAS is not, um, a graduation credit. You are correct in that. So that's not gonna keep them from graduating. But as Dr. Howlett was saying, because the DESE is still gonna oversee what those graduation, graduation credits are, we have to affirm that they have met the criteria of what those classes would have been, that the MCAS was taken in. So if they take the MCAS, they don't pass it, then we have to affirm that they have met mastery and passed those courses. So the English, the, the geometry, um, possibly geometry and Algebra I, as well as either biology or, or physics. So we have to make sure that they have mastered those classes and that they have passing grades for those.
Do we have any idea of the number of kids?
Number of kids for what?
Let's say in the last ten years that didn't graduate bec- or didn't get a diploma because they didn't pass MCAS.
I don't have an exact number. There have been some. Um, I know that from last year specifically, we had four students who did not receive their diploma, who we were able to call and say, "You don't have to have the MCAS test now. You may now come and pick up your diploma." So I would say there's not been more than three or four over, you know, per year over those last ten years. Are we looking at thirty students? I, I'd be, I'd be hard-pressed to believe that. But, I mean, I could certainly go back and try to dig out the numbers.
Some of our students, if I may, some of our students, um, do fall into the, um, the category of, um, special needs, and, uh, they do take portfolio assessments. Some of those portfolios, portfolio assessments are no longer valid. So now, we have to look at the coursework that they've taken. So if the coursework is not equivalent to a ninth and 10th grade ELA, um, test, then they would essentially not be able to get a diploma.
Well, and there's also the proficiency check. So students that were on the border of passing or not passing, um, the, there was a range of a score, and it changed year to year. And so we would do, um, efficiency prof- uh, I'm sorry, proficiency reporting, and that goes back to, did they pass and master the standards of the classes that lined up with the MCAS testing?
But if we're not going to have any more kids...
Right.
We're not gonna have, that is a bit of a negative, that aren't gonna graduate because of MCAS.
Right.
Why would being holier-than-thou in dealing with these kids for the last, let's say, ten, twelve years that got stuck that way because a high school diploma is a gateway? And if you've got a special needs kid, I mean, the offerings were the offerings, and that...
Right. So I think what you're asking too is, like, the students who did not receive their diploma previously?
Yeah.
What I'm not sure of, and I don't think Dr. Howlett has an answer on this either, is how far retroactively will this go? Is it for any students that didn't get their diploma? And if that's the, if that's what we've, the guidance that we find out from DESE, then they probably can get their diploma. Um, and I can assure you, we probably still have them. Because we or, we always order those diplomas or we order this, um, the Certificate of Completion, and so they would get one or the other. If they mastered all their classes, passed all their requirements, except MCAS, they would have gotten a Certificate of Completion, which the four students did last year. And now they were able to get their diplomas. And I think we actually contacted a student from two years ago that they could come get their diploma as well.
If I may, we are still waiting for a lot of guidance from the state. Because remember, this passed in November, and the state is still not, um, has not given us, um, really clear guidance. So we're doing the best we can as a district. The policy that we put into place, um, will most likely change as we receive more guidance. And, um, like I said, uh, currently, this is what we're going on, so if...
And frankly, the re- the requirement from the DESE is probably gonna change as well. That's why we made the choice with, you know, Dr. Howlett and, uh, our admin team met, and we talked about this, that we were only gonna talk about class of 2025 and 2026 because we firmly believe DESE is gonna probably change something. So there's no point in going too far out and making a decision when we're gonna probably have to back up and change it.
Except that there are some children that are not able to move forward because they don't have their diploma. I know Dr. Leprin and I are, I'm, we're talking about a specific student.
Well, then you might want to get in touch with me and let me know who that student is, and then I could follow up.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Um, all right, a couple of things, uh, more spring sports. Our spring sports are in full swing, but there have been many game cancellations due to our poor weather conditions, and both cancellations, unfortunately. Our athletic director and assistant AD are both working hard to reschedule games to ensure that our student athletes have every opportunity to, um, compete in athletics with our neighboring districts. So it's been a little bit of a, a little bit of a bummer for, um, for student athletes, um, and, uh, challenging when the fields are sopping wet. But we are doing every, and the courts.
Yeah.
Uh, and we're doing everything we can to reschedule things. So hopefully, um, we'll see a sunnier May and, um, more, more games out on the, on the courts and fields. Yeah, exactly.
Lacrosse beat the Vineyard.
They did. They did. Um, just a few other things. Um, annual town meeting is coming up on May 3rd. We will see each other after that, so I just wanted to remind everyone. It will be here Saturday, May 3rd, starting at 8:30 a.m. in the high school auditorium. Um, this year, our high school students have been invited to participate as volunteers for community service hours so that they can enjoy a firsthand look at civic engagement. Um, there will be a, a break this year for lunch where people can utilize our cafeteria and outdoor spaces. Um, so feel free to bring your sandwich and snacks to enjoy during break. Um, just a reminder, there are a couple articles that are related to the school system. So Article 8, which includes the town's general fund budget, that's also our budget. And Article 10, our capital funds, will be important to keep an eye on. Um, and also Article 94, which supports the lease of town land behind our football field to the Nantucket Education Trust for the purpose of building additional NPS staff housing units, uh, may also be an article of interest. So I look forward to seeing you there, and, uh, and that's it. I just have two other quick things. One is, um, last week was our Assistant Principal Week recognition, uh, recognition and, uh, appreciation. So we are very thankful to our five assistant principals. Kim Albertson at NES, Donna Johnson at NIS, Adrian Lombardi at CPS, and Tracy Melu and Jennifer Saradellis at NHS. So congratulations to them. And because we won't meet before, uh, National Principal Day, I want to recognize our principals, which will be on May 1st. So congratulations to Kim Kuvish, to Becky Janda, to Mike Horton, and to, um, Mandy Hyland. Thank you for all that you do. Our schools, um, depend on you every day. So thank you very, very much. And that's it.
Okay, presentations and discussions of issues to the committee. Applied learning.
Good evening. Michael Horton, Cyrus Pierce Middle School Principal. Applied learning. At first, I wasn't really sure what I'd gotten myself into, um, 'cause I was a little skeptical in terms of leap of faith. And to me, good teaching is good teaching is good teaching. But going back to twenty years ago, teaching math at the, at the high school, I started to recognize the value for the future in really answering the question of why. Um, why we are here, why we do this, why education is important, why it's a federal law, why it's in the Constitution. It's about the future of society. It's about the future of the human race. It is applying your learning. So you have to be able to answer the question, "Why am I learning this?" When a student asks. Um, what, what is it, what, why is it relevant? Um, what's the point? What's in it for me? So it's a good reminder for teachers to always have that answer, and it can't just be, "Well, because the state told me so," or "You need it for the next credit," or "You need it because of the curriculum frameworks" that you have to teach, the slope-intercept form, or whatever the concept might, might be. Talks about teaching, uh, teachers facilitating rigorous and relevant learning by presenting challenging real-world problems. So you can see the focus is on solving real-world problems, and sometimes those problems don't exist yet. So you'll talk about working on teams. You'll talk about soft skills. Um, I'm gonna continue to talk about the first few slides relative to the CPS experience, and then Mandy's gonna talk about NHS's journey just starting out. But, um, maybe you can close this seed I'm gonna plant right now. If, if you look around this room, there are examples of applied learning. And I'm assuming it's a college and career course or something that's in here. So even behind me, we're looking at theater education and comparing Penn State with Pace University, and you can see some of the soft skills that might be required. Um, in the back there, there's nursing at Boston College, comparing New York University. Over here, there's auto mechanic, there's computer science, real estate agent. I'm sorry to say, the BU one is on the floor, but it looks excellent. I think I can throw it back up. Um, marine biology over here, uh, enthesiology. And the reason why I got up and went and checked is 'cause I was in this room during MCAS testing earlier this week, yesterday. Thanks for that, by the way. Starting salary is $420,000. So that can be the answer for some kids who are wondering, "Why do I need to learn this?" Because it leads to careers and solving problems and making the earth a better place for our future generations. I know that's a lot, a mouthful, but that's what we're talking about. Melissa Devitt and Mandy Bardsley, um, wrote me into this grant application. It used to be through the MassSTEM Hub, because a lot of it does focus on solving problems, engineering, Project Lead the Way, science, but it's so much more than that, I've learned over the past couple of years. Um, we start with school visits back in, it was in January 2024? That was, yeah, 'cause 23 is when we started, but I think the first visit was January 2024. So literally, it's, it's just been over a year. So that's around fifteen months. Um, we started in Randolph, and then over February break, we visited Boston Collegiate. We visited the Bryant School, um, also Boston and Roxbury, one of the exam schools. We went to DC and visited two amazing schools. And after that first year, we entered into the Applied Learning Leadership Institute, also called the ALLI, A-L-L-I. Um, and this past, was that just this past fall? We went to Philadelphia, and we looked at science leadership academies, uh, middle school, a high school, and then Carver High School, all in Philadelphia. So, um, just getting out of the office and getting off Nantucket was an invaluable experience, um, for me, to put things in perspective of what is happening, what is out there in other schools. And there were a lot of similarities, so some classrooms looked very similar to our classrooms. And then there were some new creative and innovative ideas, um, that we were able to bring back to CPS. Um, high school, do you want to talk about your plan here?
So we, so the high schools just started our venture. We're in the discovery program. Um, we actually made our first school visit in February when we went to Boston, and we went to Boston Collegiate and the O'Brien School, same as CPS. And then, um, in April, beginning of April, we went to, um, the CEC Early College School in Denver. We went to the Sted School, which was, um, in line of a Montessori school at Commerce City in Colorado, just outside of Denver. And then the William Smith High School in Aurora, Colorado, which also was just outside of Denver. And we are moving forward, and, um, we're doing the applied learning that Mike is now in, beginning in the fall. So we will be looking at what Mike is doing and how that's gonna, you know, fit for the high school.
So one of the real big benefits, um, in entering with this project was that the 1-8 Foundation spends a lot of time and resources going around the globe, finding the best resources in what is considered HQIM, or High Quality Instructural Materials. So CPS has been the benefactor to receive, uh, resources paid for, um, by, uh, this grant and this project. Um, open, it started really with OpenSciEd and Project Lead the Way. Recently, it, just this year, in our first year of Investigating History, the Democratic Knowledge Project, those are social studies and civics resources. Uh, we had some training in, um, Cambridge or Harvard Square last summer. Then we have some other resources that are not necessarily, I think, funded. But you can see here, the list across the district, um, is extensive in terms of NES, the Smithsonian Science for the Classroom. That is year four, Reveal Math, year two. Investigating History is beginning next year. NIS, um, Smithsonian Science, Reveal Math, year two. Investigating History begins next year, and a new literacy curriculum beginning next year. Um, I listed all of the CPS. Also there's, we're in the first year of Reveal Math. Um, we have a new, uh, wellness and health curriculum. Those frameworks were just recently rewritten, the first time since 1998. Um, so we have a Catch Health Ed resource in place at CPS. Um, high school, I believe you also have something new in place for wellness and health?
Yeah, the HealthSmart is for wellness.
Oh, I see that. Yep.
Just getting started.
Yep, Reveal Math, year two as well. And also, high school has a Project Lead the Way, um, you know, problem-solving STEM engineering program with a focus on biomedical pathways and a computer science pathway.
I think that says we're in year three of that.
Yep, Project Lead the Way at NHS, year three. More of the same, the CPS pilot really began four years ago with OpenSciEd. Uh, that really came out of a, um, NSTA, National Science Teachers Association, um, visit to St. Louis. Um, so it's one of those things, in the past, the school committee, um, funded a group going, I, I'm assuming we gave a presentation and thanked you for that, but that led to bringing OpenSciEd, which ended up being like the chosen resource by the MassSTEM Hub, which has since become, um, the Applied Learning Initiative, you know, supported in partnership with 1-8 Foundation. Project Lead the Way, um, we've had a, a variety of turnover in, in staffing and teachers, but there's extensive training for that. And then, like I just mentioned, Democratic Knowledge Project was at Harvard University, uh, three days in July with follow-up, um, this past fall. What also is great, from the principal perspective, is that with all of these resources, um, comes follow-up support. So when you look at the calendar and you talk about, "All right, what are they doing for these half-days? What's going on, EWDs?" Um, we have quite a few coaches and, um, presenters coming and working with our teachers in the area of science, in the area of math, in the area of, of social studies and civics. And that makes it really easy for me because the planning's already done, and you already have an outside person. Um, and I believe, as far as I know, a lot of it is funded by the grant. So, um, we're, we're very lucky to have that level of support. The, this slide here really focuses on the five tenants of applied learning. Um, real-world problems, you know, something that resonates with me as a former math teacher. The content and the soft skills, you know, that, that goes well into teamwork and collaboration. I would even throw in patience and listening, uh, being flexible, uh, creativity, uh, being open to feedback and criticism. All the things that, um, the new 21st century learning and companies talk about, that what they're really looking for in, um, applicants to their, uh, jobs and, and companies are people who can work well with others. Um, so we talk a lot about the soft skills. And I encourage you, at the end of the meeting, on your way out, take a look at some of these posters because it's all very well-laid out. Iteration and persistence, um, professional framing is exactly what you see in this room. Like, what are the careers? Um, how do I get to be a sports manager or a coach, whether I go to Syracuse or UMass Amherst? Um, so that is where it brings around full circle to, why is it relevant? Why is it important to the kids? Why do I need to know this today? What's in it for me, for my future? What's, um, in this blue box? That's our focus area. At CPS, we've been focusing on essential learning outcomes, the vision of a CPS student as they matriculate from eighth grade, transition up to the high school. You know, can students, A, be organized for school? It's all the executive functioning in sixth grade. In seventh grade, it's, can you form a good argument? Can you make a claim? Can you back it up with evidence? And can you connect the dots with the reasoning of why that is a logical argument? And then eighth grade, it's all about student discourse. Students communicating, working in groups, purposeful groups, not just kids get together in a group of four and one kid does all the work and the other three kind of socialize and hang out and get the same grade as the one. Because I've heard that from students. So it's things that we're aware of and we look into. That's been our focus at CPS. The grade eight essential learning outcome focuses on student discourse, which all ties in to this collaboration and communication tenant that we chose to focus our pilot on for the past year and a half at CPS. The high school, looks like you've chosen two tenants to focus on.
So since we're still in our discovery program, as Mr. Horton was saying, we had the same five tenants. We definitely are still, we want to focus on collaboration and communication, which we've been doing even with our vision of the graduate. But we also see real purpose for focusing on real world problems. That's really what the high school is about, is getting our students ready for what happens after, after high school. And the real world problems are essentially, that's, that's what it is. And they need to learn how to make those connections so that they have a better idea of what's going to happen beyond high school and they can better prepare for their future. So we're still kind of between the two. I'm not sure if we're going to choose one over the other or we're going to have a dual focus. I believe, and as do Dr. Howlett, Tracy, and Ms. Maylu and Ms. Haradellis, that we, we need our teacher input on this as well. So we're not making a final decision. This is what in our thoughts and based on what we've seen, what we know that we're already doing in the high school and what our purpose is, we're thinking that we're between these two focus areas. So in our discovery program, and I'm going to back up a second and I just want to mention, you know, like what Mr. Horton was saying about, you know, coming on and doing applied learning. I will say that when this was brought to me, I went, isn't that the same as hands-on learning? When I started teaching like a hundred years ago, when I was in the classroom, I was a marketing and business teacher. And hands-on, project-based learning, applied learning, that's what we did. That's how our students learn. I had one class I taught retailing. They learned how to run a cash register. They learned how to give change. They learned how to interact with customers. You can't do that unless it's applied learning. When we did marketing, I had an advertising class. They learned what advertising was. They did advertising for different groups in the school. I had sports marketing. We promoted our own sports in our school. That's applied learning. So that's the only thing I know. So when they're like, oh, we're going to do applied learning, I'm like, okay, great. I know exactly what we're talking about. What I like about what we're seeing is that it's showing us how applied learning can also be in social studies, in English, in world language. So those are things that I think that that's a huge connection that we have to make for our students. It's not just our vocational classes. It's not just math. But it's everything that they're learning and how do we apply this to what's going to happen for you in your future? How does this apply to your day to day? And I say that to teachers all the time. These are some samples of just a few things of what we saw in the, you know, in the schools that we visited. I have to say that two of my favorite is the one in the, the top row, the picture in the middle. That was a medical class that we went in. I forget the exact name of it, Dr. Howlett, I think it was medical.
Medical discoveries or?
Yeah, something like that. They actually took tape and taped off a heart in the, on the floor. So bigger than life size. Students actually, they did an interaction, an interactive activity where students were given a part of the heart. What does it do? And they had to go stand there and show that they knew what they were talking about. And they rotated through that. So I think it was, it was, it was meaningful for the students and the students who we spoke to said that they definitely remember what happened there. They knew what the different parts were, what, what they do and, you know, how they rely on each other, what the right side and the left side of the heart. The other one that really stood out to me is the bottom on the left. And it's a chart. And this is a team collaboration chart. And when the students have a project as a team, they have different paths of where they are in their project. So I believe if I recall correctly, it's, you know, are they stuck? Are they, are they progressing? Are they done? Do they have questions? And the students have to go and each day, they have to be able to identify where they are with their portion of the project. And when, a lot of times you think about group projects, how many times have you said, oh yeah, I was in a group project and I did all the work? Or I was in a group project and two of the people didn't do anything? This right here holds them accountable. This is real to life. If you are working on a group project in a, in the industry, in the business world, everyone has to be accountable for a certain portion. And this I felt like was a really great example of how we teach our students that. The center section there was actually artwork that one of the art classes did. It was a great display. And that was one of the things that we saw in pretty much all the schools that we went to, was a lot of student work displayed. And it shows that they're proud of what their students are doing. The top row on the left, the little green stickies, that was, that was something that was up there. And it looked like it must have been, probably could have been a civics class. And it was about adulting and what are some choices that you're going to have to make as an adult? And they were given scenarios and the students had to decide, how would you react to this scenario? So these are, you know, great examples of how we teach our students. That not only are they in school for the education, but they're in school to learn how to be accountable for themselves. And then how do they actually take what they're learning? And how do I apply this to what's going to happen in my life on a day-to-day basis? So I, I, those are just a few, we had lots of examples, but those were a few that we had. These are also quotes from teachers and students that we heard. Students saying, you know, what keeps them there are their teachers. The, the best one, and Dr. Howlett and I talked about this and that we liked is, at the end of each school visit, there was a panel where there were teachers and students. And this one student in particular said that what she liked the most of what's been happening while she's been in school is that she's learned the skill of self-advocacy. And she's learned to be able to talk to her teachers and say, okay, I know we're supposed to do a writing assignment, but that's not really, that's not like the best way for me to learn. So could I maybe do a podcast instead? And the teachers are receptive to that. And I think that that's one of the things that I would love to see our teachers get to, is helping the students to learn how to advocate, what's best for their learning style, because we all have different learning styles.
If I may, I'm just going to add that, the, the third quote down also, do something real is, was one of the statements, taglines at one of the, one of the schools. And it was just all over. You saw, do something real, which was exciting. And they changed the college and career to career and college or career success. Because ultimately, that's where you're headed regardless of college. So we thought that that was also pretty meaningful and, and it made it much more professional and, and real world based. So we liked that a lot. That's all.
I do. I, you don't have to sell me on applied learning. Actually, my MFA is in applied drama. And this feels a lot like what we did. What I think, this is really more of a comment than a question. What I love is that it's on your feet, that they are engaging. It's not screens. You know, this could easily have been, well, everybody put, you know, and have some kind of screen thing going on. And just the movement and just that connection, I think, is amazing. So I guess I do have a question. So will this be integrated into the current curriculum? Is that the plan? I know you have these other, you know, the Smithsonian and, and that, which is wonderful. So is, or is it like a teaching philosophy kind of shift that you're sort of aiming? I mean, I know there's several.
So if I may, I would go so far as to say, it's a shift in our teachers' thinking and planning process. Because I will tell you that for me, at least, and I can only speak for myself, that when we made these school visits, quite a few, quite a bit of what we saw, we see in our teacher classrooms here. But do our teachers know that applied learning maybe is what they're doing? Or maybe they need to take something that they're already doing and it needs to go one more step to really be applied learning? And I think it's a small shift that can happen. I don't think it's going to happen by, let's say, school starts in September and all of our teachers, no, that's not going to happen. This is something that we're going to have to work on together. Our teachers are going to need some training to take a look at what they're currently doing and how do you take that next step so that it is applied learning? So that it's not a heavy lift. And the main thing that we want to make sure that our teachers, our students and our community know is that we're not planning to make a huge change. We're not making a huge change in the program of study. We're not changing graduation requirements. What we're looking at, and what I think is more important, and Dr. Howlett and I have had plenty of conversations of this since I've been here, is what are we doing in our classroom so that students are excited about being in the classroom? I, I say this and it's a challenge that we're going to put out for our teachers, is that in the first couple of days of school, I would love to see our teachers do something that whenever Nora goes home at the end of the first day of school, she goes and she tells her mom, my good friend, Ms. Lizzie, that I can't wait to go to school tomorrow. You're not going to believe what happened in class today. That's, that's the kind of excitement that we want our kids to feel.
That's right.
That whenever they leave school, they're leaving because it's the end of the day. It's not because they want, want to. It's not because they're being resistant to be in the classroom. It's because it's the end of the day and they can't wait to come back tomorrow. And that's what I think applied learning does for our students.
Just at CPS, it starts with students working collaboratively, more group work than ever before. But the purposeful group work where students have assigned tasks or roles. The, it is within the resources. I mean, we're lucky, all these resources are really coming together at the same time. The social studies pilot this year, Democratic Knowledge Project, Investigating History, a lot of the philosophy is based upon OpenSciEd. The, the writers and developers of the social studies curriculum actually stole activities and templates and sentence starters from the science resource, which is pretty cool, because we were able to put those teachers together, science and social studies working together. The last thing, and you'll totally appreciate this relative to what you just said. We're trying to focus on students, instead of taking tests for assessments all the time, whether it's pencil, paper, multiple choice, short response, is actually to present. At the DC schools, the Philadelphia schools, some of the Boston schools, the students were constantly giving oral reports. Like they, public speaking. DC, you got, you know, the lawyers, the politicians, the interest groups, you know, all, all, the lobbyists. I mean, it's, it's natural, right? But we saw that everywhere, that there was emphasis on public speaking. So I know we don't have to sell you, but the kids learn how to sell things. And the kids learn how do you back up their argument by presenting their work together? And there's even skits too, which I, which we saw. Was that in DC when they did the skits? Yeah, I think it was. The CapEx school, where the teacher was doing less and the sixth graders were running, the sixth graders were running the class. It was really neat to see.
That's incredible.
I have a question. How does the times table or right angle triangles fit into this?
Yeah, so all right angle triangle, you can't build a house, right? So I mean, you have to know a squared plus b squared equals c squared to, you know, put corners so things doesn't, don't fall apart. It's, 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 it's all, all that you see around here. Like it's relevant, it's important. For years, standards haven't changed too much in terms of the, the content and, and courses. You just have to turn kids on to what their interests are and what their passions are and how they can make money in a career off those things. And maybe if they're good at it too, that might lead to, to real success. But everyone's different. You know, someone who's going here could be very successful compared to the person over there who's doing computer science or the marine biologist over there. And I forget what's on the, on the BU page.
So, Tim, if you don't mind. I've already stolen a part of what was presented about the backlogs being stuck doing and getting stuff done. It seems to me that part of this is kind of moving away from pencil and paper and exams and moving towards a diversification of learning styles and learning methods and specializing. Is there any risk that somebody will become very specialized and not do well when it comes back to other parts of standardized testing? Just the devil's advocate question, because I'm still massively entertained and think there's enormous, extremely good value in this. Just the devil's advocate question.
So to try to sum up and answer the question at the same time, it's applying the learning. It's solving real world problems. It's making the earth, the world a better place, it's college and career. But people still have to know, the, what is this one, the hard skills? They still have to, they still have to know how to frame a house. Someone has to teach and pass on that knowledge. So there's, I'm not saying we're replacing exams. But the way we teach to make it more hopefully, Nora, more exciting for students to be more engaged, that this is relevant to them. And that working together, I mean, people are naturally social human beings, animals. So like, it makes sense for us to, to work together and collaborate.
So it's the step beyond just the basic and it's into, as the target suggests, the applied?
I, I think that things work together in concert. Okay, I think it's more of a means to the end. You know, where we're not just focused on drill and kill and you will get this. And if you don't get this, then you don't move on. You know, I mean, in some other countries, at very young ages, you take an exam test and they say, you will be a gymnast, you will be a mathematician, you will be a rocket scientist, or you'll be a doctor. And it's not, it's not the way it goes. But it's a classic debate, you know, do we need generalists or specialists? So this is kind of like combining the both together.
If I could just add too, I don't think we're doing away with paper and pencil testing. This is, so applied learning is how to get to those answers, what are those solutions? So that when the student sits down to do that paper and pencil test, they can recall it and they can tell you about it. So I think that there's still a value in that.
Nope, massively behind this. And it reminds me of my geography teacher, Mr. Scanlon, from first year to third year in junior cycle in secondary school in Ireland. And he was the guy that found ways to either make it entertaining or find your interest in it. So I'm all in for this. It was just the devil's advocate question because I was curious if there was a step away and there isn't, so we're good.
If I may make one comment. Going as part of the discovery program was really exciting for me. Superintendent, so good to do this kind of, you know, groundwork on the, you know, with students and, and, and everything as often as they would like to. So it was really exciting. But one of the things I noticed as a school leader was also the makeup of the schools that we visited. And something that was fascinating to me was in two of the schools of the three, in Denver, almost 90% of the students were of color and English learners. So we are, we're dealing with populations that we see here. And if, if we are seeing these students fully invested with very low chronic absenteeism and tardiness, 100% graduation rate, there's no reason why we can't do that too. So that was really meaningful to me.
That's incredible.
Exactly.
And if I may, before I end, I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this. I want to go back to, and I apologize, this is not applied learning, but going back to when we were talking about MCAS testing. We do have a small group of students who are retesting because they've requested to. Because in order to take and pass the Seal of Bileiteracy testing, they have to have a certain score on MCAS. And I'd like to commend Barbara Cohen. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've tested 40-plus students this year for Seal of Bileiteracy. So, yeah, so closer to 50 then, yeah. I knew I wouldn't get the number quite right. So some of those students did elect to do retesting in March? Yes, March for the ELA, because they need a certain test score in order to qualify for Seal of Bileiteracy. And then they sit for the Seal of Bileiteracy testing. So it's pretty exciting that we will have quite a few students who will be recognized at graduation with the Seal of Bileiteracy as part of their diploma. So thank you, Dr., or Doctor. We'll say Dr. Cohen anyway.
And three last connections to the high school. And three last connections to the high school is a lot of the themes you heard tonight are present in the NIASC accreditation process. Um, relative to critical thinking, civic school, civic, civic um, skill, skills. And, and we talked, someone mentioned earlier about going to town meeting. Um, and then I just have to give props to Debbie Dooley. Um, going to some of the schools in DC, they talk about, well, we're doing the schedule, the kids come in the morning and then they go. And they kind of work in the community and they, and they go to this job site and they learn. I'm like, oh, you mean like school to career? Like, well, what's that? And so Nantucket has been doing school to career for, since I've been here since two thousand, so it must have predated me. Um, so that's something that this school does, that other schools are just now starting to realize that that's a pretty good idea. And that really kinda sums, sums up what applied learning is all about.
Yeah, and our personal finance reg- uh, graduation requirement, most schools in the state do not have that requirement yet. So we're a little ahead of the curve in quite a few things.
That's wonderful. May I ask just one other question, just because you mentioned school to career, Mike? Who is um, heading that up now? Oh, she is, okay. Thank you.
If you need to hire, if you need someone, let us know.
All right, I will.
We're always looking for workplaces.
All right, excellent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Martin, you're up.
Good evening, Martin Angelov, uh, Chief Financial Officer. I am, this is the third quarter budget update. As you see on the chart, um, we are now, um. Three quarters done with, with the fiscal year and we have expanded um, one point nine. Uh, nine zero more, one, one million nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars more expenses this year than at the same time in uh, FY twenty four. It is, it's been a very challenging year. Um, we've spoken about numerous issues uh, with the financial side of the, of the budget, especially the operating side. Um, spet tuition being one of them, um, as well as um, repair and maintenance expenses this year. Uh, PD uh, budget has been um, uh, challenged this year by the expenses. So we, we're seeing an increase in expenses um, almost everywhere on the operating side of the budget. And um, payroll has increased as well, that's, that's understandable. We do have contract, contractual agreements. Uh, we knew that and anticipated that, so on the payroll side, we are uh, where we anticipated to be. We've expanded sixty-two percent um, of our payroll budget as opposed to fifty-nine percent last year. Those percentages um, tend to trend lower, just for information purposes, because we do have um, uh. Teachers that are being paid for the summer months as well, so we do accrues for the summer. That's why they're trending a little behind the general operating budgets, which are expanded around seventy percent. Just, just of note here, uh, the one million nine hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase would have been actually two. Two million four hundred and forty thousand dollars, but we already applied the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer. That the, the school committee approved at its previous meeting, that, that, that money, uh, we transferred expenses to the sped reserve account that we. Established back in two thousand and eighteen and um, that has helped offset some of the, uh, some of the deficits that we're facing this year. Community school this year faced um, a, um, a decrease in revenues. Um, is showing as of the end of the third quarter of a little over fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, those are mostly due to decrease in pool revenues of thirty-two thousand dollars as well as um, a little over sixty-eight thousand dollar decrease in extended day. I just wanna make a note here, we've, I've communicated with the community school director and the, and the business office manager of the community school. Uh, we are working hard, they, they, they have, well, I am not working hard, let's be honest, I'm just monitoring the numbers, but they're working hard. They're working hard with programming and scheduling more classes and trying to bring in more revenues. Because it's always the fourth quarter that becomes the most challenging for the community schools. Um, the, the community school, um, revolvers and programs. Um, the revenue collection in the first three quarters tends to be higher and towards the end of the year, obviously, everything slows down. Now, summer camp is the exemption, uh, the exception to this, uh, to this rule. Um, but the summer camp money for, for the summer in um, that starts um, in July. It is held in a, in a, uh, account separate and that, that account is gonna, that revenue is gonna post on July first. So it doesn't relate to FY twenty-five, it's gonna post in, in the next year. So right now it's in an escrow account. Um, they're seeing increase in revenues in a lot of other places, like it's uh, the, the summer uh, sports camp revolver. It's not, no longer, I just wanna clarify this, it's no longer a summer camp revolver. It's a sports program, recreation revolver, there is a lot of programs that are being uh, attributed there, whether it's tennis, whether it's um. Dance works, for instance, and, and that's probably the reason why you see the decrease in extended day. In the past years, when Dance Works uh, was run by Kelly Horvath, uh, the revenues from that program was, were combined with extended day. Um, this year, we, we spoke with the community school and they've moved them to the sports um, camp or summer uh, camp revolver. So it's a technicality, um, but the, the, the result, the result of all this confusing explanation on my part. Is that we are, in fact, um, a little behind on the revenue side, the programming revenue. Uh, we do know that the general fund subsidy stayed the same, it's been the same for the past three years. We've had a meeting uh, with the executive director of the community school, um, and Alicia Grazia Day and the finance director of the town, Brian Turbit. Um, to prepare for a uh, request next year for FY twenty-seven to see an increase in that um, general fund subsidy. Because it's, it's becoming increasingly difficult for the community school to maintain. An appropriate level of pricing for its programs that, that also breaks even with their expenses. Um, it's, it's, it's just the challenges that they face. Expenses have increased there as well this year, fifty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, mostly driven by contractual obligations and increase in medical insurance costs. Yes.
Do you have an idea why the pool revenues went down? Have we reached a point of diminishing returns?
I think, um, I, we're, we're hopeful that the fourth quarter would somewhat catch up with the pool revenues. Uh, but I think we had an, uh, an ex- uh, a great year last year for, for pool revenues, which was kind of, um. If you look at the comparisons from the attached chart, it kind of peaked last year, um, in um. For, for pool revenues in total and then it, it's tapered down right now. Um, like I said, it, it's being discussed internally with, uh, with the pool director and, and with coordinator and um. Executive director of the community school. It's just, um. Participation seems high, the, the pool, the pool is constantly utilized, but the, just the revenues haven't, haven't been the same as last year. At this point. So we'll see how, how the, the year ends and then we'll, we'll discuss further, but um, yeah, it's, 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 it's. That was um, a slight surprise, the decrease in revenues, because they've been trending upwards for probably. Nine quarters now revenue wise, so this is the first quarter that, that it shows slowdown.
It certainly would be an argument for the um.
Yes, the increase in general fund, um, it, it has to do with a lot of things. I mean, town always has considered the appropriation to be. The means to cover medical insurance costs and the administrative portion of the community school, which brings no revenues. Uh, but that has, has changed, I mean, we're facing increased pressures to be competitive in, on salaries. And even the commu- the community school even competes with the school sometimes for, for employees. So they have to offer competitive uh, wages for their employees as well to keep long-term employees and, and to, to, to be able to hire. So that's, that's put a downward pressure on, on, on the community school.
School launch program?
Uh, operated at a deficit, like I said, I, um, we are at a deficit of roughly ninety-two thousand dollars right now. An increase um, over last year at the same time, which was sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, we just had a meeting today with Dr. Howlett, with the, uh, Erin Long, which is the district. Who is the district manager for Chartwells. Uh, it's, it's challenging, they've posted the position for, for a food service director. But we're working through different scenarios now to see how that's gonna work. I don't think they have a definitive candidate. Um, not specifically one that will be located on Nantucket. So uh, we're trying to, to work around and see what would the chain of command. If I can use those words, you, look like for the food service program. It's, frankly, it's, it's, it's a lot of confusion, um, with, with DSE as well. We uh, have Sarah Kirk, who has participated in numerous webinars to, to, to get a better understanding of where the state is going. But the state is getting mixed messages from the federal government as well. It's been a volatile situation with, with funding for federal programs. And we have to be prepared for a time when the federal um, subsidy that covers. Universally free lunches for everybody in Massachusetts might not be there. Because that's the big portion of the money. The big portion of the money that subsidizes the universal free meals in Massachusetts comes from, from, from the federal government. The state supports it uh, to the extent, but it, and it's money flowing through the state, but it comes from the federal government. And right now, with, with the ongoing internal audit, or whatever it's called, of federal programs. Um, we, we, it's, 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 it's very vague and we don't, we don't have any information. So we operate on month by month. We submit for federal and state reimbursements immediately when, when possible. And um, we're hopeful to close the year. Uh, we, there's gonna be a deficit. Hopefully it will be covered by the fund balance that we've accumulated throughout the years in the school lunch account. And we won't have to use general fund um, money, because like I said. Five minutes ago, it's, it's, it's a challenging situation with our budget as well, so. I wish I had better presentation, but it's, it's, it's been a very difficult year. Um, any questions?
I just, I just have, um, well, two actually. Typically, that summer camp is a big revenue driver. So that we'll, we'll be seeing different numbers after that.
I, um, we've, we've spoken and I think that the money at this point that, that we've collected for, for summer camp are uh, ahead. From what was collected last year specifically for summer camp by over twenty percent. So that's, that's very optimistic. Um, and like I said, I, I am hopeful that the programs that are being offered and the classes. For the rest of the year will bridge the gap and we'll be able to close the year successfully. Um, but I have to, you know, this, this revenue slowdown gave us a little pause, uh, when we were looking at the numbers.
And is Dance Works still as robust as it was?
Um, that would be a probably better question for, uh, for the executive there, yes, and I can reach out and let you know. Uh, I believe it's run differently now, it's, it's under, um, like I said, it's under the summer sports camp revolver, so, um. But I can let you know as far as um, funds collected, that, that's what you're interested on the revenue side. Okay, so I can, I can, I'll ask the question and I'll, I'll send an, an email separately to, to the whole school committee.
Okay, thank you, Martin. That's, that's all I have.
No questions, thank you. Um, I suppose comments more so. Um, I guess for one, it's, it's disheartening to see the financials um, for the school district. When we live in a community that has such a large budget and to see how small, the teeny bit that goes to. Um, such an important part of what makes Nantucket what it is, like how, why are we not investing more in the future of Nantucket? Into our school district. So I guess that's, that's one comment. And then I'm just curious if the, um. If the town decides that they don't want to increase. Um, their portion of the community school budget, what does that mean for the community school?
Well, um, in, it, it means that we have to increase prices again, um, which they, they have been increased for a lot of the programs. Um, and the community school needs to look for other revenue sources such as grants, gifts, donations to bridge the gap. We've had a lot of, uh, and I, I didn't mention this here, I always do as part of my um, yearly, uh, end of year presentation. There is a lot of organizations that support the community school and, and help bridge the gap, uh, whether it's a, um. Nantucket Golf Club or um, the Community Foundation for Nantucket, uh, Remain, they, they have generous donors that consistently provide funding. For specific programs. But um, I, like I said, it's, it, when you start growing. When you start expanding your programs and we have, you see it, we have an increased um, school population. And um, if we, in order to offer all these programs, you have to, to have the staff. You have to have the, the, and, and that means expenses. And unfortunately, everything is, has increased, not just salaries. Like I said, my, my biggest worry the past two years have been operating expenses. Operating budget for the Nantucket Public Exclusives, under budgeted. It's been under budgeted for two years. We, we robbed the operating budget to feed into the payroll budget. It's, it's what it is. But um, we have to, that has to stop. At a certain point, that has to stop because we cannot operate that way. And uh, I believe we've taken steps on, on the school side, I mean, this is not the community school. It doesn't answer the question to the six hundred thousand dollar uh, um, town appropriation coming from the town. I believe our budget next year is in a much better place because we have also um, capital articles. That's why it's important for everybody to be present and vote on Article ten. Uh, where we have several capital articles and then go into the voting booth and vote on uh, May twentieth when we have elections. That's when we will be voting on some of these projects. Um, I believe our uh, safety and security cameras and um, and then. I think they got lumped in with other um, capital um, projects into one. And I don't know whether it's question four or five, but they'll be on the ballot as well to be voted by the uh, taxpayers. It's um. It's the best I can, I can provide as an answer right now. But I, we are optimistic that the town would. Town has been great uh, supporting the community school, it's just been challenging the past several years on the town side of the budget as well. There's been news um, now about revenue shortfalls on the town side from the short-term rentals, so that, that affects our budget directly. As well as the town budget.
If I may, um, to answer your question, or not answer, but to give you an opportunity, all of you an opportunity to think about this. Um, our next school committee meeting will have the Nantucket Community School providing their um, annual update. So if there's anything that you'd liked me to ask the executive director to prepare for that, please let me know ahead of time. So this is for our May uh, sixth meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the audit, right, uh, this year, to transition into the end of year. Um, audit, we, it's a completely, it's a completely different format. For everybody that has seen this uh, audit in the past, it used to be a three-page, four-page document with just findings, see if there were any. Um, they have uh, expanded it under the guidance of the DSE to include now general compliance requirements and specific compliance requirements. On the general compliance requirements, I won't go through all the, the requirements. The only uh, finding that we have is the one that we've had over the past four years, that our um, our, our system, accounting system that we use. Which is Munis, is not compliant with the, the DSE accounting system that typical school systems use uh, around Massachusetts. We've continued to look for solutions for that. It's, it's, it's a very difficult uh, project to do. We've spoken with, with, with districts that have undertaken it. A lot of them have been forced to switch to different accounting system so that they can get two accounting systems created from scratch. To avoid any kind of um, um, loss of information. Because what, what needs to happen for an accounting system to be created for the school? All the old accounts, the way they exist today that you see them in all the support reports that I've, uh, that, that you received today as part of the presentation. They need to be transferred to these new accounts to provide historic information. Otherwise, we'll be going in the blind all of a sudden. Uh, meaning the new accounting system will have no history whatsoever of previous expenses and it will require a lot of reworking. Um, so we've spoken with providers, I've spoken with colleagues across Massachusetts. Short of us moving away from Munis and going with a different accounting system, there is no easy solution to that problem. It's not financial, the issue, town is willing to help, to work with us and pay, share the costs of such a. Um, such a workaround, but it, it just hasn't, we haven't found any reliable. Um, company or, or somebody with technological knowledge to be able to do this for us. So that's why this continues to be a finding. Uh, this is, like I said, fourth or fifth year. It is a finding across a lot of districts, I'm not losing, using it as an excuse, it's just, it's just a fact, but um. I don't, I, we continue to talk with town. It's part of the town audit as well. Uh, the finance director, Brian Turbit, does not like it any more than me, seeing that finding because it affects his audit as well. Um, it's just, like I said, it's, it's been a challenge. And there are two other findings this year. Um, unfortunately, under specific findings, there were two. Um, banned authorization notes, uh, amounts that we didn't have included in the end of year report. I get all the debt schedules for the school information from the treasurer of the town, and those two numbers were not included. So we've spoken with treasury and the Finance Director of the town to make sure that in 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 the future that they provide me a full set of support, uh, so that I can report the numbers, I did not know about these numbers at all, so we we, there was a lot of back and forth when I saw these findings with the Finance Department, but I believe we have a system now and um next, next year, this will be corrected. I have already done amendments to the end of year report, so um that's, that's all I have to confess.
I can say that Munis is a nightmare for everyone who's ever touched it, so I understand.
I personally like it, but but it 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 it's.
The only person I've ever heard say that.
Yeah, I I I I don't mind, I I've known Munis for a while, it's it is quirky, it is quirky, but the the latest up update that they provided, at least provides you with a um a lot of historic information, which is what I'm looking for. When I, when when you, when you, when you do reporting and finance, you have to be able to provide information of what has happened in the past and what is, what do you see happening uh going forward, so Munis can do that. I don't think we utilize Munis to its potential, so that's, that's part of the the reason, and I don't mean to uh diss in any disrespectful way to either our technology department or the town technology department, but uh it requires a lot of training and um and a lot of um fine tuning. But you can make Munis do things that um that would make our life much easier, it's just we need, we we need to have the staff to be able to hire the staff and train that stuff and and that's, that's, that's challenging. Any kind of accounting system that we decide to use is gonna have its limitations and it's gonna have its challenges, so. That that's just my personal take.
Yeah, that's true.
But you should take it with a grain of salt, because I, because I like it somewhat.
But that discordance is, goes back beyond six years.
It goes back to uh two thou- to nineteen ninety-eight, actually, it goes back twenty seven years now. Uh, we have had a separate, back in two thousand and ten, the previous Finance Director of the school district, Glenn Field, um, contracted a person that provides a lot of training for us and for our staff and for town, Mark Abrahams. And um he came to to the island, the school covered the expenses, he worked to create a sequence, it's all about the structure of the the account structure and the numbers, to be able to to talk to the town one, so on our end, it would look different, but at the end, when they do reports, the town wants to be able to extract the information it needs to to provide such such important documents as the combining balance sheet and all the reporting that they do to the Department of Revenue. The thing is, they report to the Department of Revenue, we report to the Department of Education, it's a completely different requirement, so that's where the whole issue comes into play, but it's been going on for way before me and probably before, actually, the previous Finance Director, Glenn Field as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
Committee discussions and votes to be taken uh on the selection of school choice participation. We would hope that everybody would vote no, can I have a motion to vote no?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I vote to approve the donation from the Nantucket Education Trust of the Nantucket Intermediate School with the amount of six thousand dollars to be used for the grade five nature classroom field trip.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I vote to approve the donation from Muzak to the Nantucket High School's Music Department in the amount of five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I vote to approve the donation from the Friends of Nantucket Public Schools and Nantucket High Europe, High School Europe Field Trip in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I vote to approve the donation from the American Legion Orleans Post three oh eight to the Nantucket High School Europe Field Trip in the amount of two thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote to approve the donation from Cape Cod Five, their Nantucket High School Student Gift Account in the amount of a thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote to approve the Nantucket High School Diversity Club's Overnight Field Trip, April eleventh and twelfth, twenty twenty-five to Boston.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's sort of after the fact.
We'd also like to congratulate them.
I vote to approve the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I vote to approve the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five workshop meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I vote to approve transfers and invoices.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nora, you're up.
Um, so yesterday was the start of quarter four for the school district.
All right, I guess that's yours.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, yesterday was the start of quarter four for the school district and we are coming up on April break, which is very exciting. Um, over break, there will be a group of students who will be going on a World War Two history trip to Europe. Um, they're gonna be visiting England, France, and Germany. Uh, this Wednesday, April sixteenth, the NHS Guidance Department will be bringing a group of sophomores on a field trip to visit Bridgewater State University and Wheaton College. Um, yesterday was a pretty successful day for sports. The sailing team won against Cape Cod Academy, they beat them three to two, and the varsity boys lacrosse team beat Monomoy thirteen to three, which is great.
Wow.
Um, today, boys tennis played against Sturgis West, the outdoor track team had a meet in Wareham, and I'm pretty sure this is their first official meet, which is awesome for them. Um, the varsity boys lacar- lacrosse team played against Nossett, and the sailing and both girls lacrosse teams were meant to have games today, but unfortunately, they were postponed. Um, and this Thursday, the Trienn Music Honor Society will be going to the Salt Marsh Center to perform for the uh members there once again, so that's all I have.
Nice.
Okay.
Thank you, Nora.
Subcommittee work group reports?
We had a policy committee meeting. And
We will be, if if I may, um, we will be review, we reviewed the I policies, which are related to um students, and so that um and curriculum and such, so we will be pro- providing you with any mass, any large changes um for discussion. Um, we will be meeting again May twelfth for um review of some other policies, some that are, that need to be um uh reviewed uh very soon around our um mobile crisis protocol and suicide prevention, things like that. Um, and so that will be important, and I don't know, Sean Talk, you want to say anything about negotiations?
Um, they've been moving along.
There we go.
And that is all I have to say, that they're moving along, yeah.
Successfully.
Very successfully, yes.
I'm a bit collaborative.
So I was unable to attend, um, unfortunately, I had, I had a conflicting meeting, so I was unable to attend, but as the legislative representative, Beth and I are going to Boston prior to our next meeting, so we uh we will be leaving on Monday and then we'll be back and be able to report back on that on May sixth.
It's called the Day on the Hill and it's related to the um, the federal, some of the federal um situations, uh concerns that the state has. I think it'll be very interesting um with school committees and uh school groups, et cetera, um, part of this, so it should be interesting to see.
Yes.
Next meeting, May sixth, we have um student enrollment, um special education update, uh Nantucket Community School update, Veritas and I policies. So a busy time, uh focused definitely on special services, uh, so that should be interesting.
I just wanted to add um one comment, um, Nora, when is the um award ceremony for the Nantucket Golf Club?
Um, that's the twenty-eighth of April, yeah, it's a Monday.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Thank you.
Great, just wanted to get that out there.
Anybody have anything else?
No, sir.
We're gonna find Eunice Ross's diploma and put it up in the Hall of the Whale.
Oh, good.
I think that's a beautiful idea.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.